First on the agenda is our county clerk, Joe Provancia. Joseph, good morning.
Hopefully, everything's been emailed to you of my reports. Basically, February was a good month. It's very strong, bringing in some good tax money. We are this month as well. Motor vehicles picking up a little bit in this month over a couple of slow months in January and February. I respectfully request the following consideration for the following resolutions. The first is declaring the month of April as Donate Life Month. It's usually celebrated or observed in most DMV offices.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, unanimous second.
I'm not sure if it's been included in your packet or not, but I have them. A resolution of congratulations to the town of Minerva on the occasion of their 200th anniversary, the bicentennial.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, unanimous second.
I have a resolution consideration for Norma Johnrow Stoll, who passed away. She worked at Glens Falls National Bank. She was Secretary of School Lake Central School, as well as in her retirement, she worked for the fire department. She was very active in the community of School Lake.
Move by, Mr. Marnell.
A resolution for Frances E. Nells, who passed away. She was a longtime employee of the county. She worked with me when I had the youth bureau out in Elizabethtown in Mineville, and when I was elected county clerk, she moved with me.
Yeah, I'll move that.
Also, there is a resolution that I presented in February about increasing DMV revenues from 12.7% to 25%, and I had some reservations about it because there was rumor that the title fee would increase to $75 from $50. So what some county clerks are doing is asking for the increase, a resolution to increase DMV fees, and then turn around and oppose, a resolution opposing the title fee increase.
So, go ahead with you, Mike.
Would you just say that all at once?
There are bills out there to increase DMV revenue from 12.7% on every dollar to 25 cents per dollar. But, the concern was, at the same time, they're increasing our title fees from $50 to $75. And I had concern that they were going to increase the title fees just to cover our increases, and then some said they're going to increase title fees regardless if they give us extra money. So, we can go on record and ask for an increase from 12.7% on a dollar to 25 cents on a dollar, and continue to oppose an increase in title fees, because I think that increase is too much.
Move by, Mr. Morrow, second. Mr. Morrow, discussion.
So, what we're suggesting is not contingent upon this scheme.
Right. We just want the money.
Making a declaration puts us in position.
We want the money, but we don't want you to increase title fees.
Mr. Provancia, this is just, there's a bill you said in the legislature for this. This hasn't been approved on the state end, right?
No, no, there are numerous bills to increase our revenue from 12.7 to 25.
Gotcha.
We just want to go on record saying, yes, that's a good idea.
Oh, absolutely.
And then a resolution saying, but we don't want you to increase our title fees from 50 to 75, because I think that's harsh.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Joe, was there something in the governor's budget, I recall also, about increasing registration fees across the board for motor vehicles?
That we hadn't heard of yet. I will look.
I thought I read that somewhere. Okay, any further discussion? Oops, sorry, Jerry.
Should they be two different resolutions, though?
Yes.
So we don't, this resolution that I moved was just to increase from 12% to 25.
Yes.
So they don't misunderstand that the state legislature would have another one to oppose the 50 to 75.
Right.
So, all in favor of Mr. Morrow's motion? Second resolution, do you have a motion on that?
I'll move that.
Mr. Morrow, second. Mr. Monty.
This is, I'm sorry, I'm not on this committee.
Okay, Mr. Gillen.
I'm sorry.
To oppose registration.
Title fees going up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Paul Osgarret.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for Mr. Provancia? Mr. Taylor.
Tyler. I'm on the committee, but I'd just like to say, I've been into the clerk's office and the DMVs several times in the last month, and the employees there are fantastic.
Yes, they are.
They have a tough job in there. I saw it when I was in DMV one day, there was a couple of people giving them a hard time, but they kept their positive attitude and they worked through it, and I just recommend the work that they do down those hours.
Yes, they do.
I'm stressed out there.
I'll bring that back to them. Thank you.
Anything further for Joe? Nah, thank you. Brenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My report was now that to the committee. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Brenda? If not, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Diskin, pleasure.
Good morning, and I'm not sure if this has been done yet, but I want to congratulate the Moriah Vikings on winning the state title in Class D. I assume you probably did a resolution on that earlier.
I had, I planned on doing it.
Okay.
But I'll let you do that then after.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll give you the honor of doing that. I just want to offer my congratulations on the record. You got my reports on sales tax. Sales tax is kind of holding steady this year. We haven't really gone, seen any big increase, any big decrease. It's pretty much on par with what we saw last year. The only difference we're seeing is that we're getting earlier, the money in the first part of the month, bigger amounts, and then the second checks are a little smaller. The state has changed their method of collecting it, and they're able to report earlier and get us a little more money earlier in the month, but you'll see that the second payments are down a little bit overall. We're about even for last year, from last year, year-to-date. I think we've, yeah, we're only up about $53,000, which is minor. There's no questions on that. Occupancies were strong again in February. I think what we're seeing is results of the vacation rentals. What we did notice was that people who are signing up for annual reports, or signed up annually because they didn't have that much, are starting to report now. They really weren't due until March, but some of them chose to report early, so we started seeing a lot of it. Just before I came over, I picked up the mail, and there was a stack about this big of returns from occupancies, so we're going to have a huge month in March. March is the biggest month we have when all the annuals report, so we'll have a better idea of how we're doing after that. We do continue still to get registrations, new registrations every month. We just recorded about four or five of them within the last week, so people are still continuing to sign up as they're made aware of it, or being caught up, what I guess, if I should say. So we are catching up with people on it. Questioning?
Any questions, Joe? One, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Diskin, is it safe to interpret the occupancy tax collection as these are the busiest months, or because of reporting, because of different payment schedules, is that...
Well, if you look at your schedule, you'll see that March is the busiest, one of the busiest months, again, in August and September. Obviously, August and September are the summer months we're getting reports for, but March is the month that anybody who reports annually, once a year, files, anybody who reports quarterly, and anybody who reports monthly. So we tend to have a pretty large, fairly large month in March, and then obviously the other two big months are August and September, when we're getting July and August returns for the summer.
Gotcha.
We'll see next month how our reports are. I'm sure we'll be considerably larger than we were last year in March, I expect. But we'll see those, we're starting to get those now. The only other two things I had on there was my monthly reports of expenses and revenues for the first two months and the cash roll. Couple of things I did want to quickly go over, if there are any questions on those. I had a couple of inquiries from supervisors about where's our state land money. I've been calling the state once a week. I finally got an answer from somebody down there, and the answer was, we're running behind because we've got a lot of new people and we're short staff, which is what you hear from the state all the time, but they did promise me that we would either get it this week or next week. It was in line to be paid out. I know most of you met your warrant by now, so you're probably not going to need your state land, because we're starting to get checks from your tax collectors, but if you have not met them, your warrants, we will be sending out, excuse me, sending out letters as soon as we get them, inquiring how much you need and if you do need it. If you don't need it, obviously, you'll send back so you don't need the money anymore. If you do, we'd ask that you just take the amount that you need to make your warrant to match up your warrants. It's the same thing we do every year. Just want to bring you a quick update on where we are with the tax foreclosure, 12 and 13, obviously, are still out there, due June 1st to move forward. To date, I was surprised. I did a check this morning. I thought we'd have more people that would pay by now, but in the month that we sent the notices out, we've had 49 people off that list of 358 that have paid not a large amount, not as large as I expected, but I'm sure we'll get a big surge in May. People tend to wait until the last minute to pay. But we still have about 300 parcels out there potentially for tax foreclosure, and I'm going to guess we're probably going to be somewhere between 100 and 150 to sell. That's my best guess right now is where we'll be when we sell them. After the 1st of June, we'll move for a foreclosure petition from the court. Once we set that date, I anticipate a late July, early August sale for the first group. The 14 and 15s have been completed, the searches on them. The notice, I expect, we're not going to wait until the next, first one is done before we start. I've discussed this with the county attorney. We're in the process now of preparing those notifications to go out, finalize the list of who needs to be notified. I expect within a few weeks, we'll have that. We'll start addressing the envelopes with the certified notice cards on them, and the regular mail cards, the regular mail labels. Once those are done, I would anticipate sometime between 15th of April and the end of April, those notices will go out, barring no problems with them. Give them 90 days, which is going to bring us to probably the 1st of August, mid-August, and then from there, we'll move for foreclosure on that. Our sale will be over on the other ones. We'll immediately start on the next ones, and I would expect by late September, early October, we'll have another sale, and then we'll be caught up. To date, we have spent just a little over $100,000 in searches. $100,000, I think we got a number of $106,500 that we spent in searches. Any questions on that?
Mr. Monty?
How many in 14 and 15 are we looking at?
Right now, I'd say probably in excess of 450. We mailed out over 1,600 pieces of mail in the first mailing. I'm probably going to mail out about 2,000 and an extra. Obviously, the lists are bigger, so the number of people we have to notify, the number of lien holders is larger, but so there'll be some additional mailing. We continue to get notifications back of people who haven't claimed their certified mails. We're searching them for second addresses if we don't do those. If we can't find a second address, what we do is notify the U.S. Postal Service in the community where the last address we had, if they have a different, better address, we also search it through the Essex County Surrogess Court to see if there's been an established estate set up. We check with Real Property Tax Services and the county clerk's office to see if they have any additional new addresses that we haven't had before. If we find a second address, we send another certified in regular mail out again. If we don't, we put them on a list of those that need to be posted. Posting means putting that notification, that booklet that we send out inside of a weatherproof sealed plastic bag. Either, if it's a structure, we'll attach it directly to the house or structure, or knock on the door and hand it to someone. If it's just a vacant lot, we will attach it to a post, you know, to a post and stick it on the property. Now, that's done by our auction service. They go out and do that, because they have the best way to locate these people with their GPS services they're in, so we ask them to do it. Once those postings are done, then we've fulfilled what we need to do.
Thank you. I did read an article in the Pulse Star that you probably saw, Mike, that they are now doing away with the last 11th hour hearings that they have, and for somebody to try to save their property.
Warren County.
Which, Warren County, which we, Mike and I discussed many times, wondering how they could do that anyway legally, but so that's...
I think if you talk to somebody in Warren County, and I've talked to several people at Warren County privately, they'll tell you, we don't know how we're doing it, we're just hoping nobody ever catches us on it, because I just don't think it's illegal to do it, and it's a tough position to put a board into to arbitrarily decide who gets extra time, who doesn't, but...
I think one thing we need to resolve, because I was just talking to Dan briefly, is before the next tax sale is establishing some of those proceeds into a fund to take care of some of these dilapidated properties that don't sell in the sale.
We do have that, I believe. We set up something, I believe we did a resolution years ago, if we had, and if not, we should do it.
Yeah.
Where any excess over the amount we make in a sale goes into...
If we did, and I got a couple of spots.
Well, we haven't had any excess to give you.
Use it up.
We haven't made money out of them.
Realistically, you're not going to get any excess in.
It's a man who wants that.
I mean, it's a, all kidding aside, it's a serious prop, not only in my town, I know in some of the other towns.
Yes.
And the, you know, we had discussions before about putting it on somebody's property tax, even before it goes, like, well, you can do that, but the county doesn't have to pay it.
The county doesn't have to meet it on the warrant. Right.
Okay? But it's still, you at least got it on there, okay? Obviously, the county's not going to reimburse it on the warrant. The town has to chase it from that point on, but at least it's a step in trying to do something with some of these properties.
I think, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the way it was determined is if we made money on that sale, and the town had put it on a warrant, we would give anything over that to the town to help pay off that part of the warrant. If we didn't, you know, unfortunately, the last couple of sales, we haven't netted a profit on, so we haven't been able to do that, but I thought we did a resolution on that. If we didn't, we should, check into it.
Yeah, I mean, it's an issue, and I'm sure it's not just in my community.
But I'll be determining who gets the money, while you're all going to be asking for it.
I don't know, you know, I mean, some of these places...
We're never going to get enough to do it all.
But I've got two places right in the Village of Port Henry that were sold in the last tax sale. One of them's ready to fall into the street on Elizabeth Street, that, you know, the county had owned previous to that, didn't do a thing with it.
Right.
You know, but I couldn't say a whole lot, because it was in the Village of Port Henry, but now I can say plenty, up to April 1st, so, but it's certainly an issue that we need as a board to try and get a handle on, on it sometimes.
Well, look, and I thought we had done a resolution, maybe it was just a discussion. If not, we should set something up so that we have, set it into some kind of a fund that sets that aside to use for this exact situation.
Okay. Anything else for Mike? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan?
I didn't have a lot. I just wanted to bring you up to date a little bit on the DSS interviews. We had eight candidates that we had scheduled interviews for on Wednesday and Thursday. Now, obviously, on Wednesday, those interviews did not occur, but we did do three of the interviews on Thursday, and were rescheduled for next, this Thursday, to finish the last five interviews. From that, we would probably have a second round, so I would hope within the next couple of weeks or so, we'll have some kind of a recommendation for the board.
Any questions on that? I did miss the, one day, Thursday, because I thought Dan had said he postponed everything till this week.
His attention deficit doesn't allow him to read emails.
I promised better attendance, better attendance for the other rounds, so...
What is that?
Thursday, Thursday at...
Nine o'clock. What's that now?
You're on record, Tom, on Thursday at nine o'clock.
Is it Thursday?
Yes, it's a Thursday.
And I'm going to send McNally also a reminder, because I understand he didn't make it.
No, he's had surgery recently.
Is that...
He's had surgery on his neck recently.
Ah, that's not an excuse. Okay, the, is that all you have, Dan?
Unless you have any questions, anything here?
I just want, quick, what are we doing in regards to the governor's proposal? I mean, I don't even know if that's law yet, or has to go through...
No, in terms of the incentive for...
Yeah, shared services, not incentive. He's saying we have to do it.
Yeah, no, I have not really even considered it. I mean, there's, there's a number of things that we've talked about in the past that I think you could roll out fairly quickly, if you needed to have something together. I mean, you know, the most obvious ones are, you know...
Solid waste.
Well, no, solid, the solid waste is already done. You can't do anything that's already been done, so you wouldn't even be able to get credit for solid waste. But one of the areas that we've looked at in the past, and I think makes some sense long-term, is tax collection. You could consolidate tax collection at the county here. We do a huge amount of it already, so that's something that would be an easy one to roll out if we needed to. Tax assessing is another area, so there's some areas that I think could, if this thing does pass and it becomes law, that we could certainly put together as a proposal.
I mean, with the assistance that each town and assessor's received from Real Property.
Yep.
Alone is a huge savings, okay? So, if that does become, you don't feel we're going to have any issues in terms of...
I won't have any issues, but the proposal for, but you might have an issue passing it.
Okay. Anything else? Anything for, anybody have any questions for the manager? If not, thank you. Charlie Lewis? Good morning.
The governor's budget, of course, hasn't passed yet, but we do have some updates on the STAR exemption. The Assembly and the Senate rejected capping the STAR at last year's amount, and they also rejected making the income verification program for the enhanced STAR mandatory. And on the 2nd of March, the Assembly passed and delivered to the Senate a proposal to turn the STAR exemption back over to your local assessors. As we all know, the exemption to, or the deadline to apply for exemptions has passed. It was March 1st for all the exemptions. So what they're looking to do in their Assembly proposal is to extend the deadline to apply to Grievance Day, which is always the 4th Tuesday in May, that's May 23rd of this year. And they're also saying that the Department of Tax and Finance must notify the assessors the name and address of any taxpayer who qualified for the school tax credit last year. That's those that received a check instead of an exemption on their bill. Now, anyone who's applying for the 2017-18 school tax rule, the local assessor would then need to determine the eligibility for the school year using that information. However, DTF is saying that no application would be required, so I'm not sure how you would qualify them if you don't have an application, so that's a little unclear to us at this point. And again, this hasn't passed yet, but it's something that did make it through the Assembly and is in the Senate's hands.
Any questions on that topic?
Okay. And the forest exemption, we currently have a 480A exemption that is 80% reduction on taxes. There is a proposal for a 480B exemption, and so far this year, we received nine new 480A commitments for a total of 2,083.49 acres of land. That's in addition to what we currently have. I attended a public hearing in Moriah and asked the DEC gentleman that was there about the new 480B proposed program that hasn't passed yet, and he said that instead of that being a 40% exemption, it looks like it might be a 60 to 70% exemption if it does pass. And remember, that's not just on forest land like the 480A, that's on open space.
Any questions on that? I'll tell you, I know we always have in the back of our budget, but when the state was looking to purchase Tubmell Pond, I really, with Charlie's encouragement, started taking a look at the number of exemptions in 480A and aged exemptions, and I'll tell you, it's shocking when you go down through your own town roll and find out how many exempt properties that you actually have in your own community. It certainly is an eye-opener.
It's ours, too, Ben.
Yeah.
Yeah, over 2 billion here at the county level.
Imagine if you had that taxable value of 2 billion, your tax rate would be like 30, 40% less. Yeah.
Yeah, and with the exception of the STAR, it's a shift from one taxpayer to another.
Yeah, exactly. How's that? I'm sorry, Mr. Monty?
Charlie, does DEC still claim that they don't have the time to enforce all the 480As? Because we've had some properties in Lewis that have been butchered, that were under 480A, and when we contact them, we always get the excuse, well, you know, we don't have the time to go enforce all of it.
That's something that we hear coming from the state level quite often, well, we're shorthanded, we don't have enough people. People retire, they don't replace people. We hear it over and over and over.
Is there any recourse for the community in that?
Well, right.
Does the law provide for local assessors to raise an objection if the state doesn't?
I have to check into that and see if it's the assessor that would raise the issue, because I know, you know, exemptions are theirs.
Right.
You know, it might be the assessor that needs to...
I didn't know if it would be the assessor, because they may not have the forestry knowledge, or would the community have to hire your own forester to go in, and then...
Yeah, there is a penalty if they don't follow a plan.
Oh, I know, there's a severe penalty, so, but how often is that enforced? Thank you.
Okay, and then on March 31st, I just spoke about the Village of Port Henry dissolving. Our database and tax maps have all been updated for the 2017 Tenanted Assessment Rule to reflect that dissolution, so we are ready to print a rule that doesn't identify the village.
Right. There's only one village, I believe, left, correct?
Two.
Two, it's Partisarannock Lake and Lake Placid.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Morrow will tell you that is not an easy thing to go through. Mr. Diskin, Mr. Diskin actually proposed it when he was mayor of Ticonderoga, which was many, many years ago, but there certainly is a savings for everyone. Correct, Mr. Morrow?
Correct.
Okay, I've got one. Go ahead, Dan.
I do have one thing I wanted to talk to you about. I don't need anything else right now, but the village of Lake Placid actually contacted us about the village joining the county's self-insured workers' comp plan. They have some fairly significant costs associated with their workers' comp, and they think, and they believe, and I do as well, that they potentially could realize some savings if they joined us as a, under a self-insured plan. That is possible to do. It just requires that you amend the local law that currently says it's an 18-member self-insured plan. What it requires, for me, is, and I've got some of these numbers, I've been working on them, and at some point, I will be able to give you and tell you exactly what this is about in terms of dollars, but I need, and I received last week, five years' worth of claims history from them. I also received a quote from a PERMA as to what our overall premium would increase based upon village joining our plan. So I need to run those formulas just to see what they look like, the impact they have as to the whole group, and what the cost would be for the village in terms of joining that. But I did, you know, I do think it's something that's, makes sense in terms of sharing costs with the village, and I don't, I'm not anticipating that it would have a huge impact on the group overall, because, you know, they, again, it's one member out of what is essentially a 18-member group now, because right now, it's 18 towns in the county, so it would be 18 towns, the village in the county. So, once I have those numbers, I'll bring them back in a report for you guys to consider. If it's something that we can do and potentially save the village some money without severely impacting the group, then it's probably something I would recommend.
And that has no, I know we have a crazy formula as to how...
Yeah, we...
But that would have no impact on that, under the weighted voting and all that.
No, the only part of it...
They're already included in that.
Well, they, right, right. So, in terms of determining their actual cost, the only portion, which is the same for the county, we wouldn't be able to use the weighted vote factor, because it's already in the Alba count.
Right.
But the county doesn't have a weighted vote factor either, so we sit outside of that in terms of the formula. The formula's pretty complicated. So in terms of determining their actual cost, the only portion, which is the same for the county, we wouldn't be able to use the weighted vote factor, because it's already , it's already out of town. But the county doesn't have a weighted vote factor either, so we sit outside of that in terms of the formula. The formula's pretty complicated. It's based upon five years of claims experience. It's based upon 25% payroll and 25% weighted vote. Everybody says, why would you ever use weighted vote determining a formula cost? Well, weighted vote is the, actually, the only true way to represent a one-for-one cost associated for each individual in the county. So in other words, if the town of Mariah has a certain amount of weighted vote and they have a certain amount of residents, if you use that in the formula, it actually allows you to allocate some of that cost back to those members of that community on a one-for-one basis, the same way it does in terms of a one-for-one vote. I developed that formula probably six, seven years ago, maybe more.
It was heavily debated, debated by one, by a former supervisor from Gardwell.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Was going to pull out of the system at one point.
Yeah, she was. Actually, at that time, I developed 17 formulas. Just, because I guess the last one was the one everybody...
Mr. Proctor?
Well, I just wanted to say I don't really see any downside in the doing that, because the Village of Lake Placid is going to pay. It's not costing the county anything. They're going to pay whatever the premium ends up being. At the end of the day, though, it's all about your saving tax dollars. You know, we're sharing services. It's no different than when we took on the fire service groups. We saved the fire districts thousands and thousands of dollars that would have been on the property tax by allowing them and the county to be the umbrella to form. They were having the same issues with workers' comp. And I, we saved thousands of dollars for the fire districts by forming that group, and that's been quite some time now, and I think, to my knowledge, it's working very well.
Yeah, and that's a little bit different, only in the sense that the fire districts stand alone in terms of their risk. If you, in fact, bring the village into the formula, you would be sharing risk with the village as well as they would be sharing your risk. That's what happens whenever you put somebody into a self-insured group, and that's essentially what we are. But again, you'll be able to see what that impact is. I'll be able to show you what the impact is without them in the group, and I'll be able to show you with them in the group, and that will determine whether you want to move forward or not.
Mr. Moore?
As Mr. Skazafava alluded to about the town of Chesapeake taking over the village, how hard it is in Mariah, I'll tell you right now, when you take over a village, a municipality, a town takes over a village, that's only partially in their town. That has two towns inside the village, or the village is within the two towns and two counties. That's a job. The services is nothing, no problem. They gave up all their services years ago. They had nothing left. But I tell you right now, as long as Charlie's up there, we couldn't get, did it at all for the tax maps and the districts to set up their debt district and stuff without Charlie and her employees' help. Thank you, Charlie, for that. We couldn't have did it without you.
Thank you.
Same here, because setting up the districts and it was just, couldn't have done it. Charlie has been keeping track of her expenses in the case of Port Henry and Mariah, which I believe we will get reimbursed for, and then we're going to reimburse the county through the dissolution grant that we received from the Department of State. But it certainly was a difficult process, and I had my sights set on Crown Point, but I don't think I'm going to go after them now, after what we...
Good idea. But just going back to the Village of Lake Placid, I mean, essentially, that's what's occurred with both the Village of Peasville and the Village of Mariah. Those employees now are under our self-insured group. Now, it wasn't the same way, but it ultimately ended up that those employees fell back into our self-insured group.
Theoretically, you should bring your town for...
Oh, yeah, you will see a reduction in costs.
Right, which, right, theoretically should bring your costs down, because we're adding more employees to the formula. Anything else, Charlie?
I just wanted to make a note that the assessors have started to turn in their exemptions and their assess values. We have four towns doing reassessment project this year, and tentative rules will be filed in the towns May 1st.
I have a question. Can a town board order a reassessment?
While both the assessor and the town board supervisor have to sign the plan...
They do, yeah. So the town board does not have that power to order a complete town-wide reevaluation.
Not without the assessors signing and agreeing.
Depends on your relationship with your assessor.
Pardon?
Depends on your relationship with your assessor.
Well, it's good.
There you go.
Beautiful. Couldn't get any better, I'll say. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Anything further to come before, I do have one resolution that I'd like to move. This is a resolution of congratulations to the Mariah Boys varsity basketball team who just won the New York State Section 7 championship, which I believe is the first for basketball in Section 7.
Class D town, not section...
Class D.
They represented.
Class D. Class D, I said B.
Yeah, but you said Section 7. Well, class D.
Because you guys interrupted me. Class D.
Correct, and we want you to get it right, so you look good.
And the irony of this is, is that the last team to do this was in 1930, which was Mindville High School. So both schools were out of the town of Mariah, but it certainly...
Were you a junior then, Tom?
I was, I just barely remember the game. But it certainly, it certainly is an accomplishment that, you know, that the community and the school and actually the team members are very, very proud of. It's not easy to get there, and they find, they've been there a few times, and then in the last, you know, game, they come up one game short. But this was the year, and I'd like to move the resolution of congratulations to them. Okay, anything further to come before this committee? If not, we stay adjourned.